Work session, I guess we can start some, I don't guess I have to bang the gavel so, or do the Robert's Rules things, we can just begin. Anything you want to say, Dr. Peters?
No, other than, you know, I know that $481,000 is a lot of money, trying to find where that's going to come from, but I guess I'm one of those that glass is half full. We started at $746,000 in deficit budget and we hope to end this year, $400,000 better than we started, so I don't want to lose sight of that.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have any comments before we start?
I just want to thank Sarah for getting all this information. That was a lot of information to have to pull together, so I appreciate that time that you could go over to.
She'll be working hard, I've been trying to crack the whip on her, but she's put stuff together, hopefully it's all the stuff that we've been asked for, and I have some packets here, we got a small PowerPoint up there, so we'll kind of, as we get to that point, we'll pass these things out, so you've got those in your hand as well.
You want to go ahead and start them, pass them around?
Not yet.
Okay.
Sarah, you want to start?
I'm looking for questions. Do you want to go through the PowerPoint from last week again, or where do you want to start?
Let's go through some of these slides here that we've got. Looking at that, that's your financial statement and budget from 2006 all the way until 2016. Of course, we know 16 is not over yet, we still got another month to go, but we've got it in the ninth month that's up there. And it's got your ending fund balance, there's page two. And I have one of those for y'all to take home with you. Let's see if that's it. I'm going to pass what's up on the screen to y'all, so you can kind of see plus what's up there. Everybody got one?
Got one more?
Those are the first two pages that are there. On my page, I also wanted to share the numbers of years where teachers have received raises. And they received a raise in 2006 of 6%. In 2007, they had a 5% plus five days. In 2008, they got a 7%. In 2009 was 11% proration. In 2010, it was a 9.5% proration. 11 was a 3% proration. 2014 was a 2%, and in 2017 is a 4% raise.
What was the 2%?
2% was...
Yeah, the raise.
Yeah, 2014. Got a couple of slides, say if you will, just kind of run through that. Took all of those years, and I don't know whether this has any data that we can use or not. And those numbers at the bottom are not, 1 through 25, those are the same numbers that are in the top of the first two pages of what I just handed you. Okay, so number one is the budget of 2006, and then the next one's financial statement of 2006. So, I guess this is one of the ways that we can look at that and see if we can find some outliers out there. If you look at number 22, there's a little outlier there that gives us a little less money than previous.
So, just to make sure I'm like, understanding, so on the top you've got, you've got budget and a year, and a financial statement and a year, and so you're saying that the financial statement is the actual ending?
The first number that you have there is $7,950,967, that's the state sources. And the first number that's there on that line chart is from the budget from 2006. And the next one is the number that belongs there because it's a financial statement from FY 2006.
So, Sarah, is, so the first, looking, obviously such as revenues at this point, total revenues under that budget, basically your 2006 column, $9,712, that's what the original budget is, projected revenue was for that year, correct?
That is correct.
And the next number over, under financial statement this year, 2006, is where we actually ended the year in actual revenue collected?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading the column right. And so, at the bottom, or toward the bottom, is the net income or the excess revenues or expenses, budget versus actual for each year. Original budget versus what we actually ended the year for net income for each of those years?
That is correct.
You'll move some slides, Sarah, it has different pieces there. Total revenues, there's another line graph in the same fashion as the state sources. See if there are any red flags there. You can see that we had a nice tip in probably number 15. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there are 10 on the first page and 10 on the second page. So, it would be the fifth one on the second page, one, two, three, four, five. That is total revenue. 12, 4, 9, 3. Actually, it's 12, 8, 7, 5. So, that was the high point of the total revenues. Yeah. 12, 8, 7, 5. That was the big year, crossing, looking at that little line graph. Anything in 13 ring a bell? Instructional services, you've got the same high point in 15 and 16. Which is 13 again, I think.
Yeah, I guess, it'll take some time to digest all these numbers, but in general, one of the questions that I have, or sort of what I feel a little bit frustrated is, looking back like in the early years, on this front page, if you look at budget versus actual for example, 2006, the budgeted, you know, of course, it's all a yes, I know, I understand that, but when I say frustrated, it's frustrated in trying to make decisions as board members to what we can and can't afford, and what we can and can't do, and I know it is for superpinned, I'm sure, but you see, budget '06, revenues was basically even, net income of $14,000, budget, we ended up $195 up. And at that point, we had $927,000 in reserve, definitely fiscal year '06. And that was, was that one month, Sarah, roughly?
I'd have to go back and work it.
Probably close to it.
Probably.
And then, in '07, we budgeted net income of $196,000, and we came in at $178,000. It was a little close, $196,000 less than $178,000. In '08, we budgeted $123,000 positive, and we came in $112,000 negative. So, you know, not a huge difference, but, so that's, and then the next year, '09, we budgeted minus $154,000, and we came in minus $184,000. So, that was, you know, close. In 2010, we budgeted minus $27,000, and we came in positive $131,000. 2011, which is my, which is mainly my real-time experience in the board, I come in 2010, we budgeted a positive $390, $391,000. We came in $1,300,000 to the positive, so that's a $1,000 more net income than we budgeted, which was a very pleasant surprise. The next year, 2012, we budgeted $200,000 positive, and we came in $1,150,000 to the good. So, again, almost $1,000 better than we can budget. In 2013, we budgeted minus $644,000 net income, which is a $1,007 swing there for, so one question I have, or some kind of questions is, like, what happened to cause us to bank $1,000 unexpectedly, $1,000 extra dollars two years in a row? And then, what happened from '12 to '13 that caused a $1,007 swing in, at this point, expenses over revenues? And then, but then we ended the year, on the budget anyway, then we ended the year $86,000 positive. So, I guess without going any further with, you know, with further questions on that net income versus budget versus actual, maybe we can start there.
Let me take a look at your expenditures of instructional services. From '85, or excuse me, '82 to '70, now right there is a $1.3 million reduction in state money.
From what year and what year?
Well, is that not from budget 13 to financial statement of 13? No, from financial statement 13 to budget 14. Yeah, from '85 to '70, so that's a $1,500.
Is that part of the proration?
When did proration come?
Yeah, so that was probably something to do with enrollment, I guess.
You had 11% proration in '09, '10, you had 9.5%.
Our total revenues in '12, actual, is 12.4. Actual in '13, 12.8. Budget 12.4 plus 12.5. And that was one of my questions, I sent my email Friday. Was this, the difference in this, did you pick a few years right here that we just went over?
You did, but I thought, you know, I appreciate you sent the detail, but I thought that you could pull out the highlights, you know, as to what caused the, from your perspective, what caused the difference in the numbers? Well, my worksheets are 87 pages long, so it takes a bit, a good bit of time to go back and look at every line item off of 87 pages and compare it for 11 years, come back with an analysis of each line item for the last 11 years. So, what you've got here on this one sheet are the comparisons of totals. Some of those years, we had additional federal funds, we received stimulus money, we received increases in our title funds.
What year was ARA, federal ARA? What year was that, was that 13?
2009.
Is that when ARA came in?
American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. But I don't need actually. Yes, and we carried over to the second year. Do you remember federal funds in your disruption?
Well, 11 was when that ARA was, I think. Nine, 10, 11, 236 in one of these lines, which is about $69,000 less than some of the others.
Yeah, when we started collecting the 1% sales tax, the year it was passed was January 2009, so the first year, we got a small amount from it due to the fact that AlloTax didn't do their job in January. So, we didn't start getting full amounts of our share until March, so we only had about six months of county sales tax in 2009. So, we will see local revenues increase in '10 and '11 based on the fact that we got the full year during both of those years.
And that was about $1,000 per year?
It brings in about $1,000 per year.
That one, sorry, that's what again?
Our share of the county one percent.
So, that kind of kicked in at the same time that proration did?
Yes, it did.
That started in 2009?
Yes, it started in 2009, but we only got about six months after 2009.
That's maintenance and operations right there, if you take a look at that big dip, that's when ARA came. Nine through, '09 through '12 there, that's not 2009, but, be the second, on page two, which is your 11 and 12.
Can we just have that graph explained, please? I mean, I don't understand why the ARA had, you know, explains the dip. Did it take over our part of the?
Those were the expenditures of operation and maintenance services, and when ARA came, we were able to use some of that money to pay some of the stuff that normally state money would be able to pay for. So, we used that federal money, as a matter of fact, I would suspect, as we did, that we could use that for even utilities.
We did, we used it for maintenance, we used it for utilities, we used it for building services.
So, this is just the state part, so, is that correct?
State and local.
This is the state and local, so the federal kind of filled that void, right?
Yes.
In the graph?
In those two years.
Okay.
We received additional funding for special aid Title I, and then the money that was allocated that we were able to use to request general fund money.
Continue to roll through those. Next one is general administrative services. That's my office, basically. And then, the next page is total expenditures, from 2006 to now.
I'm sorry, are those years at the bottom?
No, those aren't years, those are, well, they're years, but the numbers don't correspond with the years. Those numbers correspond with which place these columns are. For example, number one means it's this first line, two is the second line, and three is the third line. That's at the bottom.
Okay, so 24 means the 15 or 16?
Projected 16.
Okay. So, the peak there, what year was that in the middle?
Peak up on top was in...
Like above 14 and 15?
15 or 15. So, you go down this line here, that's a total expenditure, and you find the peak there, which was 11, 9, 12, 1, 12, 7, 13, that was in budget 13. Previous year, you had expenditures of 11, 2, and that financial statement in your budget for the following year was 13, 1. So, it's almost $2 million swing right there. With only a corresponding $50,000 increase in revenue. I wonder if that's the payday for losing students. Now, we lost students, I wonder if that is the beginning of that revenue loss?
For what year?
It was 13.
Would actually be easily figured out, when you look at the enrollment, it says you're delayed. I thought, what we get revenue from states based on, after the prior year?
It's actually two years to them.
So, that would be, that probably I'm right, because I think it was 10, 11, or 11 and 12, that we lost over the two years we had the decline, so that would be 13. 14 would be?
It was a lot of time, a lot of pressure, a lot of, so, we're saying decline in 2014.
So, again, you know, big picture, I'm looking, looking back, we pretty much had, you know, positive, we had in 2006, positive $14,000 projected net income of the budget, seven was 196, positive, eight was 123, positive, nine was 154, negative, 10 was $27,000 negative budgeted, 11 was $390,000 budgeted, positive, 12 was 201, budgeted, positive, and then 13 was minus 644, 14 was minus 825, 15 was minus 6, it was actually originally minus 7 something, but it got adjusted, I guess, to minus 645. And then this year, minus 4, well, 16, minus 7.6, and this year, minus 481. So, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what happened that caused us to all of a sudden be in these large, six-digit, negative budgeted numbers. And it's a little bit difficult too, because, and the first year, we had a large negative budget, it was 2013, budget minus 644, but we ended the year, positive 86. So, in 2014, when we were presented with the minus 825, the thinking was, well, last year, it was minus 644, and maybe that, you know, and so, it probably ended up positive again, and you need to count on that, but that's kind of was at least my thought process. But then, at the end of 2014, we were minus, we ended up real negative dollars, minus 358. So, it wasn't nearly as bad as we forecasted, but it was $500,000, I'm sorry, $358,000 negative. And then, in 15, we budgeted minus 645 in the budget, and we ended up minus 692. So, therefore, I'm not apt to believe that because we're budgeting minus 481 this year, we're going to end up better than minus 41, because last year, it ended up worse. Well, actually, this year, 746 is what we budgeted, it looks like we're going to end up minus 300. But, so, that's kind of my, I know we can't get the budget exact, but it seems to be a lot more variance than it was from 2006 or 2011. So, and looking at these years where we had the big swings, like in 2013, when it was budgeted minus 644, we ended up up 86, were there any, anything unusual that happened that year that caused it to be $700,000 better than we thought?
We can say the local revenue has increased above the budgeted amount, locally $300,000, $350,000.
Expenditures were $500,000 less than what you'd projected.
Because you know, we have no control over those local revenues, we are given what we're given.
But they're tax collections, so I watch back at them, and they're pretty steady.
Something about its part.
So, I mean, that's not like some of this might deciding, like the city council appropriation is like an annual, what guy decide, but the tax collections are pretty reliable. Even the ones that sales taxes, they're reliable. Except what we, you know, our enrollment changes that, you know, because the base rate enrollment, so when our enrollment goes down, we get less proportionally, but the county sales taxes has in itself actually stayed level to go up every year, just like our city sales tax has.
Well, you can go back to the 13 year and look at it line by line, and you can see what, what was, what increased and what didn't.
And then the instructional services that year was budgeted at eight point five, almost eight point six, and we ended the year at eight point two six. Is that something that often changes that much, or? That's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
That could be, that could be iPads. Because it's, could have been originally budgeted as an expenditure when actually it's a debt payment, and that's when it comes down to the debt payment. And you say we had four twenty-seven five in thirteen.
Um, four twenty-seven five in thirteen?
Well, no, it's actually budgeted as debt payment, so that's, doesn't have anything to do with it.
Is that the iPad, the four twenty-seven?
It was the teacher devices and student devices together. The teacher devices were eighty-two, the students were three forty-four.
So in fifteen, it was three forty-four for iPads?
Mm-hmm.
And then this year, there's none?
Right, there's none this year. We budgeted forty-two for seventeen for the teachers to refresh.
So the instructional service is something that's typically that difficult, I mean, like, because it fluctuates that much, that it's typical that it would be three hundred and thirty thousand dollars off?
It fluctuates depending upon hiring and when the budget is done, you know, we're not through hiring sometimes. It fluctuates depending upon who you hire, who leaves, what their degree and experience is.
We haven't lost any teacher units, though, since oh nine, have we? I mean, even though we've lost, you know, some students, we've regained some enrollment.
Those teacher units have become local units.
Which ones?
The ones that we lost due to declining enrollment.
And how many, how many was that?
Uh, it's different every year. This year, we're currently down to point four nine at the elementary school, and point six seven at the high school, but we were at a high at one point of eleven plus teacher, local teacher units.
And typically, who's responsible when you get to main is that, that the number of units versus?
I don't make recommendations to hire, so.
Right, I'm just saying.
That comes from local school level.
So, we didn't really have any local units prior to two thousand and ten or eleven?
Prior to ten or eleven, we make it carry one to two local units.
So the total local units we have now is, is what, eight? I mean, what, help me with the math.
Point four nine at the elementary school, point five guidance counselor, so point nine nine total at the elementary school. We have three point six seven at the high school, point five guidance counselor, so four point one seven total at the high school. Those are all local.
So the total for the system is?
It's over five. And then that does not include the retired teachers that we have brought back to teach on a part-time basis. Those are all local as well.
Right, how many of them?
We have
So those, those are part-time folks, though, right?
They're part-time.
And we use those folks for dual enrollment and advanced placement?
Mm-hmm.
So we haven't reduced services at all during, during all this?
And we have the board approve those hires.
Yeah, based on recommendations.
Right. But we approve it.
That's right.
And then we get a financial report every month that we sit up here and review, and we approve, or ask questions, or discuss, and we have the option to vote no, yes, or no, to approve those financials. And I know that we're all at different levels, and how much we need to know, you know, I mean, we all know, I don't need to know as much as some others at the detailed levels. When I look, when I look at all this information, it's unreal to me, that we asked Sarah to pull ten years of this kind of stuff, and we gave her four days.
Okay, we're under a deadline.
This week, I've asked, I contacted a superintendent in the area, I contacted a superintendent out of the state, I mean, within the state, but not in our area, similar school system. And I asked, what would they do if they got this list, or this detailed information they need, and they said, we couldn't do it. We couldn't do it. I asked the CFO in this area, and a CFO out of the state, within the state but out of this area, said, I couldn't do that right now. And one of them has staff, and I said, well, you've got staff, she goes, no, I've got two new recruits to need. She goes, you guys, she said, this CFO said, you guys approve a budget every month. You get a budget, you get a tax reconciliation, or whatever it is, you see that, she said, that's, why didn't you bring it up then? Why are you making her go by, teasing? And I said, well, I'm just trying to get information, because I know that I don't need that kind of detail. And I feel like, I'm not sure what we're trying to get from Sarah. If we approve these every month, and it's very, with these numbers, and the detail is so important to us every month, why are we waiting now to worry about what happened in two thousand and six? And I know you weren't here in two thousand and six, but like, if you got somewhere in two thousand and ten, you were here. Or if I was here, you know, if I had something in two thousand and fourteen, I was here. So it'd be very hard for me to think back, well, two thousand and thirteen, why did I vote yes, or why did I vote no on that particular hire? So I guess I'm trying to find, I guess, the I just think, in my personal opinion, this is so micromanaged to get down to such levels of detail. When I don't understand what the point of all this is. Are we trying to make her do a balanced budget, or are we trying to maybe identify cuts? Or what are we trying to make Peterson and Sarah do? Or what are we asking them to do?
Well, Kelly, your first question about the number of years, it helps me to see trends, and I think that's why Sarah presents, you know, this to us monthly on like, you know, two thousand, two thousand and nine through two thousand and sixteen of tax collections and things like that. And so to go back ten years, it's not unusual, at least in my world, to see what trends have been, and to see what's happened over history, to see what might be having a computer to-
Because you have that information, right? We already have that, we've been given that information before, is what I'm saying.
But you see, it's compiled, it's very helpful, and something like this, Kelly, you know, we're year by year, as opposed to having to pour through five hundred pages, six hundred pages of this to do it, and I-
Whereas, but my impression is, if I wanted to do that, like, the whole supplement was a huge issue to me. I didn't know I had Sarah, or Peterson, or anybody else to pull all that information. I went through all those different school systems, and I pulled it out line by line. I'm not saying that may not be important, my point is, I just think it's so much work for Sarah to be, for Sarah to do it for this.
Well, and I'm not arguing with you there at all, Kelly, but we're under a deadline of September fifteenth, and we just got all this last, we just got a negative budget out of the blue, a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar negative budget out of the blue on Friday at six o'clock before Labor Day weekend. And we're, and basically, you're expected to just take that and vote on it without, and I think part of our job as board members is to ask questions to Big D. And I have concerns that, sure, we built a, a, a healthy reserve since two thousand and ten in our system, but it's quickly depleted. And our CSFO and our superintendent have both said that their target, what they want to see is three months' worth of reserve in our fund balance. And we are presently below that, and headed lower if we adopt this budget of negative four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I don't think it's, it is very, being very good stewards of the financial, that the finances of this system provides as board members to lead this system, you know, in, in, in a negative way, in the way of this fund balance and our budgets. And so, I'm not questioning votes or decisions, backing whatever, I'm just sort of trying to figure out, for example, how did we go from, from banking one point one million dollars net income to the next year budgeting minus six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars?
But how does that help us besides what we're doing for thirteen, for seventeen?
Because if we over or underestimated expenses in some of these years, maybe that's happening now, and maybe it's not really a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar negative budget, maybe it's a lot better, potentially, that if we look at some of these trends, and, you know, I'm not at all trying to micromanage, I'm just trying to understand, and as a board member, when I'm asked to take decisions, whether it's hiring, or, or, or whatever, you know, when I'm thinking, well, we've got a minus four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar budget, so for me to want to do, to spend money on anything.
But we have, that's what I'm saying.
But if we end the year with a positive hundred thousand dollars, at the end of the day, we expected minus four eighty, we ended the year at positive a hundred, I mean, that's good news, but it's, but it's kind of like, well, you know, where did we miss? And let's try to maybe next year, if we're, if we're underestimating the ones that sales tax revenue, and it consistently comes in higher than what we're estimating, maybe we should estimate it a little bit higher, so that we're not projecting this negative budget that is not really there, potentially. So that we can maybe do some things that, that we might otherwise have not done, because I'll tell you, in two thousand and thirteen, when we budgeted minus six forty-four, you know, that was a kick in the gut, you know, because we had been banking a million dollars the prior two years, a million three, and a million one. And so naturally, we're like, we don't need to do anything, you know, with a minus six forty-four budget, well, we ended the year up eighty-six thousand. In reality, well, that's a whole different story. And so all I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm not like getting on this money for missing the numbers, I'm just saying, let's, let's look back at some of the years and see where we've missed, and might we be doing that again in this budget year? And if we, if there's a chance we are, might we, might we modify some of the guesses, or some of the estimates of expenses or revenues, so that, you know, it's more in line with what the trends have been for the last ten years?
For me, it comes down to confidence in the budgeting process. So, in five to six, we were within a hundred and eighty-one thousand of what we budgeted. Next year, we're within seventeen thousand, the next year, within two hundred thousand, the next, the next year, three, thirty thousand, the next year, we're within a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. All right, those numbers are all plus or minus, but we're within two or three hundred thousand dollars. All right, then we go to ten to eleven, we miss it by nine hundred and fifty-four thousand. We miss it by, the next year, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand. The next year, we miss it by seven hundred and thirty thousand. The next year, we miss it by four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, during my time on the board, I, I felt like there was about a half a million dollar cushion in the budget. So, this past year, we come in almost right on the number. And so my question is, now you're asking us to approve a negative half a million dollars? Are we going to come in on the number, or are we going to have that cushion in there? And I'm asking my CSFO to explain it, and she's sending me the data and asking me to interpret it. In my opinion, that is Sarah's job, to interpret the data. Do you feel like that's your job?
If I have staff, possibly. Right now, it takes every minute of every day just to get done what I have to get done.
So you can't do that, that job to that level, because you don't have enough staff?
I don't have enough time.
So how do you expect this board to do that work, too? We, we're not, we're not qualified to do that work. That's what I expect your job. And so if I ask you that question, why did we miss that far?
When I have time, I'll sit down with each one of those years, and I'll go through it line by line, and I will give you a line by line recap of everything from those years. But right now, I am working on budget, September thirty year in. I really don't have time to do it.
Are you recommending that we employ another person to help you?
I am not making any kind of recommendations.
Mark, do you feel like that she needs help doing this job?
I think that probably during some of our tougher times, we probably could use an extra hand during a month or two months during this tough time right here.
Is there a solution to that, or? Is there a way to find someone to come in temporarily to assist during that time?
I hadn't, I hadn't looked, that would be, be an option to be able to do that, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on here, as you can hear, and I don't think anybody's questioning Sarah's competence, but there's just a massive amount of stuff that's got to be done.
I mean, you're asking this board to approve something, and, you know, I think that they have been doing that, this board has been doing that for the last, I don't know how many years. And at this point, I think you're getting asked, you're being told that, hey, you may not get approved this time. So what's, what's going to happen if the budget does not get approved? Because there's no confidence in that number. That's the question. What's going to happen if the budget does not get approved tomorrow?
I'll call the State Department and ask them.
We have not asked for an extension?
In the past, as a board, we've talked about information that we needed as a board, and that we, we even said at one point, we would have a timeline, so that this information that we're asking, because I think, in my time, I know every year, since we asked more, every year, and we had talked about having a timeline, like, on this particular year, you know, every October, the board is going to be looking for X, Y, Z. Every November, every, so that it's not a last minute on her to get the information, or it's an email from one of us, and we want it now, an email from another one of us, and to get this now. It's my understanding that information directed to our administrators has to come from, is to come from the board. And as a courtesy, I think, our administrators and Sarah have, in the past, answered us individually. It is my understanding it comes with the board, and if we had maybe a timeline, no one is thrown at the last minute to try to gather all that information up. And that could be on our part, too, you know, the board would expect to see this at certain times, or to give information at certain times. And that may help with the workflow.
Well, I think the crunch under is because of the last minute nature of me to receiving the budget. And so, I'm, I understand that staff is limited, and I'm just curious, just that I have a better understanding, like, what is the budgeting, when does the budgeting process start, and how, how do you receive, what do you depend on, what deadlines do you, to depend on to receive information for the budget?
In a perfect world, the two local schools would have their decisions made by the end of May. The last two years, we've not had a perfect world. We normally get our state allocations during May, since it's been as late as June. We don't get our federal allocations until usually July. I have to wait for the people that are responsible for all of those budgets to complete their personnel items, complete their budgets, and return those back to me. I have to wait for the local schools to return their budgets back to me. Every program is managed by a different person. I don't manage any of the programs until I receive all of their numbers. I can't fill in the pieces of the puzzle that come from local funds. For example, we have people that are partially paid out of title, maybe they're partially paid out of special ed and title, maybe they're partially paid out of special ed and foundation. Until those pieces of the puzzle are filled in, I can't finish the rest of the pieces of the puzzle.
So, in the example where the department heads are, those are supposed to be, what were their deadlines this year to get you their information?
As soon as I handed them the budget sheet, it was ASAP.
So it wasn't like a hard deadline? So, it wasn't like a hard date, like, I gotta hand this by this ASAP, or just ASAP?
I gave them about two weeks, but I can't do anything about it. They're all adults. I can't stand there and say, you have to give this to me, or I'm going to send your budget in with zeros. It has to be done, it has to be put in ECA, it has to go through the state portal, it will be rejected if those items are not in.
So, what percentage of the folks made that two-week deadline?
No one.
No, no one?
No one.
So, would it be appropriate to, you know, share this concern with the superintendent? Or, did you kind of just keep it to yourself? I'm just trying to see how it works.
We used to have regular staff meetings, and this information was shared at that time. Like I said, we've not had a perfect world for the last couple of years.
Well, Sarah, since I've been on the board, we've gotten this email that says a couple of days before the budget year.
It's very difficult to get people to turn in their information.
Right, I understand in the last couple of years, it's been for the eight years, what, six years I've been on board?
That's true, and when you have turnover in departments, you've got new people trying to figure out what to do, trying to figure out how to budget money that they've never had to budget for before, you know, trying to figure out, what do I do with this?
You're always going to have new people, that's not, that's not what the problem, I mean, it's, the information is becoming last minute, regardless of the last two years.
It's always been a problem, getting the information back.
Well, I mean, it needs to get fixed.
But in fairness, you obviously put it in.
Right, it's putting you in that position.
But you realize, I've worked in a world where I see these pieces every day, eight hours a day. So, you want to put me in a position of writing them every day, because you haven't given me your worksheet yet? We're adults.
Right, and we're all held accountable in our job to be, to meet deadlines. I mean, that's part of what the superintendent and the CSFO does, that's part of your job, to hold people accountable.
So, Dr. Pishon, were you aware that deadlines were being missed on submitting information?
I don't, I don't know, we've had that conversation, no, but I certainly can be a part of fixing that.
And again, I understand your concern, you know, it's last minute, but the reason it's all kind of crunched now, we're in a hurry to get, putting this money under three or four days, is because we have a state deadline to meet, and we all just sort of got this, you know, to, and to further, is, is, is it still the goal, or your thought that we should have three months of reserve?
I guess not, deal.
That's a perfect world, I would say. The state requires, the state requires one.
One month, right. But we've said in the past that three months is what we really want to have.
That would be sweet.
If, if we reduce, presently, we're projected to be down to 2.1 at the end of this year, it was originally going to be 1.7, because we have projected a 746,000 negative budget for this year, we're going to end up at like a minus 300 instead. So, our fund balance is going to be 2.1 at the end of this year.
See, at this point, at that point in the conversation, to me, is where you're looking ahead and saying, what's going to change that going forward? If it doesn't change, we'll be under that one, that we'll be down to one month. And so, that's where I'm asking for your advice on what's going to, what's going to make that negative half a million change going forward? Like, if, if it gets approved this year, I want to hear confidence that next year, it's going to come in different. And that's where I'm asking for advice from both of y'all. I mean, if, if I'm, if I think that it's going to be negative another half a million next year, then I'm less likely to approve this. And so, I guess I'm asking you to convince me that it's going to be okay.
Let's look back in the, on the budget pages here, we talked about that revenue pieces. We, we lost 100 kids between 12 and 13, didn't we? Is that where some of our million dollars is going into fund reserve?
That equals a half million, 100 kids equals a half million dollars in revenue, approximately. But I guess it's not realized until, what, the next year or two years, you say?
Right. I believe we lost 100 kids two years on a row.
Right.
I know, and 13.
And it's leveled off since then?
Right. But at the same time, we were increasing staff. In 13, we had some major increases in staff.
And that was as, as a result of?
Board统计
So, you're saying we increased staff in 2011, which was, if you use your state sources, would that be a good indicator? Or, you know, we look down here, 72, 7.2 million, and then 2012, 7.2 million, 2013, 8.2 million. So, there's a million dollars, is that what you're saying? Is, is where we added a million dollars worth of staffing in 2013?
Yeah, if you compare a financial statement FY12, a financial statement FY13, instructional services went up by a million dollars.
Okay, and your local funds, revenue, that's a million there, where it normally is 300,000, 100,000. Why is that a million? I forgot why that happened.
Was that the iPad, the money, that's not the iPad initiative?
I'm not sure what that was.
Um, let's see, it's the bottom line of revenue, other fund sources, because it's not local, it's other fund sources. And on 2013, 1,089, but when you look at the, that same line item for other years, it's usually around 150,000, somewhere around there. Just wondered why, that, that may be why you spent the extra million in, somewhere.
You're looking at the increase in fund balance, is that what you're talking about? In FY12?
I'm looking at fiscal year 13.
Fiscal year 13, the increase in fund balance was 86,000 in that year.
I'm looking at...
Other fund sources?
Other fund sources.
FY13, financial statements.
Oh, yes, that's the iPads. That's the debt on the iPads.
Okay.
Other fund sources is debt.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the bottom.
And so, we got that in the income, or we assume that is debt?
Right, it's income and it's debt, it's an equal amount.
So, where's the debt? Where, where does it go out at?
Where did it go out at?
I see the 400,000 down here.
Right, that's the debt payment, and then the purchase of the equipment would be both in instructional services.
Okay.
Yes?
So, it's a combination of those two areas?
Right.
All right. So, we had one, a million dollars in instructional services, and 400,000, or 300,000, or something, so 1.3 million, and our, we agreed to eat 300,000 of that, and we got a million in, in debt to pay for it. Is that how I'm reading that? I know I'm jumping around.
You're kind of jumping around.
Yeah.
The, the entry for the debt and the entry for the purchase of the equipment would be equal, so you'll have an equal amount of revenue and an equal amount of expenses.
Okay. So, then the...
But it would have incurred initial expenses associated with the iPads, other than the debt, which would have been the cases, software, the software to manage and monitor, it's very expensive.
So, we ate that part of it?
Right.
Okay. And then the next year, the instructional services go back down to normal, 6.9 million?
Right.
Okay. The thing that really kind of, that I have to struggle with is the 400,000 iPad, and we don't have, we don't have that cost anymore this year, but yet, it seems like our negative number should have adjusted by that much at least. And maybe that's what that is? The 746, down to 298?
That's true.
And so, this year, we will not have that again.
But that 746 shouldn't have been, wouldn't have been budgeted? Because you either definitely had that payment, right? So, that shouldn't have been the budget?
Right, it is not in the 16 budget.
So, that makes it really 1.1 million different, if you had put that in the budget by mistake?
If we had budgeted for iPads in 16 and then not spent it, then that would have increased the, if we had budgeted and spent it, then that would have increased by 344, or whatever the new amount would be.
Right.
So, in other words, we're projecting 93016 to be minus 298, or say minus 300, instead of minus 7.6, but if we'd had iPad, it'd be another 300, almost 400,000 dollars negative, so...
Right, or whatever the cost is.
700,000 dollars negative, real dollars down. So, the, the, the financial statement's supposed to be here in 15, we ended the last fiscal year with 2.471 million in reserves, right?
Yes.
And then, I'm looking at budget, projected 93016, 2.1 million, and that just represents the difference there, I guess it's about 298?
Yes.
And then you've got budget for fiscal year 17, 1,096, should that be a lower number than that, if you subtract 481? For budgeting minus 481, wouldn't it, wouldn't it go from 2.173 minus 481?
Yes, if that's how it ends up, but if you'll see at the top, the number that I left there was from the prior year. You've got your beginning fund balance, 2.4.
Okay. So, you're not getting projected?
So, if it does end up with projected 2.1, then yes, that will drop.
And where'd that 2.447 come from, that's up there?
It's close to what it was at the beginning of the year. That's comprised of, of a variety of different funds. And when you project the beginning fund balance, you just have to guess that, because you have, you haven't ended the year yet.
If, but if we were, if we got projected 93016 fund balance at 2,173, so, that probably should be at 30,000.
Yeah, it should be, but I didn't finish the projected until after the budget was already done.
Okay. So, if that's two, if it really is 2,173, 198?
Take another 300 off 1,000, 1,006.
Oh, so you, and that, that's already happened, right? That 298 is already out of that 2.73?
Yeah, the 298 is out of the 2.1.
Right, so then you take the 2.173, subtract 481 from it?
Sure.
To get there. So, so we're projected it, and this, this, we adopt this budget, and our projected fund reserve at the end of the year will be 1.69 billion.
Right.
And that's what, that's what makes me uncomfortable. Because I, I'm kind of like David, I used to feel like we had a, this is things padded, which is really conservative, you know, we're coming in five, or six, or seven, or eight hundred thousand dollars better than what we're saying we're going to, but this past year, when we came in worse than we said we were going to, and this year, we came in negative again, I'm feeling like, what if that 481 is a real number? We're willing to end this year 1.7 million dollars fund reserve with no real plan to make it better, and we, we haven't even bought iPads yet to replace what we have. That, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm concerned about. So, you feel pretty strongly about that 481, you're confident that that is a good number?
I do. I do. I have never, on any budget, padded anything. Have I, have I budgeted revenues conservatively? Yes, but never to the point that it would be grossly unbudgeted. Routinely, I budget the sales tax at 1 million, it's coming in at 1.1. That's about the biggest fluctuation on anything that I have ever booked. Everything else is as close as I can possibly get. You know, I don't know what the weather's going to be, I don't know what the utilities are going to be, I don't know what new projects are going to come along, I don't know what new people are going to be hired, I don't know what new curriculums we're going to add. It is a, it's a working document.
So, if, if you had to trim the budget, what areas would you look to first?
Section two is a detail of FY17, and every dollar that has been put in the budget is Maybe there are some questions about certain pieces of the FY17 that... Sarah, have you got section two over there?
Sarah, under local sources, what is the district special, abhorrent mills?
That is part of our property cases.
How is that different than the other, like, the regular, and then the county regular?
We have a three, a 5.5, and a 10.
Okay. So, the 10 represents the district special?
Yes.
I noticed that one seemed to fluctuate a little bit more than the other two.
Well, that one also has to go to the foundation program. So, this year, you'll see 885, 120, all of that goes to the foundation program. And then over in capital projects, 80,898, that goes to capital projects. Those are required local matters.
So, regardless of what it is, as it comes in, it goes there?
It's going to go in, become part of the foundation program.
So, if you're, like on the sales tax, you're talking about budgeting conservatively a million dollars, and it's usually 1.1?
And this year, I put 1.1 in there.
Right, yeah. But on this one, it seems like you're budgeting, trying to budget right on the number, is that...
I'm trying to budget at abhorrent tax right on.
Right on the number, okay.
Because we have to put those two matches in there with foundation. And again, when property values fluctuate, after 2008, when the market went full, our property taxes went down, because in Calum County, they're re, were...
Reevaluated.
...re-evaluated every year, so, you know, our property tax fluctuates based on that. We don't control that.
So, this year, we got more... So this year, we got more transportation money, certainly less local funds for that, about 100,000?
I'm projecting this year, I think our transportation costs will be locally about 130, 140, I don't know, we haven't seen August bill yet. Next year, I projected for local costs will be about 70,000.
That's what I thought, 70,000. So it's 60 or 70 better. So that's local money that we would have to do something else with.
Right.
The raises that were the state granted this year, was that completely absorbed by...
By the increase in the foundation program.
By every employee that we have? For every employee that we have?
Yes.
So even that's what was paid out of OCE? Don't we pay a lot of salaries out of OCE?
We pay as many as we can get in foundation in foundation.
Right. But OCE, you lumped that in with the foundation?
Yeah, that's all part of the foundation program.
So foundation got a, what was it, 4%? A 4% increase plus the corresponding increase in benefits to offset. So the 4% increase in the state did impact us at all locally, or does have to expend more local dollars to accommodate that increase?
The increase we had in foundation covered the increase in personnel costs, yes.
So there were no other increases that we have recovered as a result of that?
As a result of the 4% raise.
Is there anything else?
But not everybody is paid out of foundation. Some positions are paid out of local.
And those, we had to handle with the 4% increase. So what did that represent for us as an increase in cost locally?
I did break it down between foundation and local. I have a total of what the grand total of what the 4% cost, but I don't have to break it down by each source of funds.
I mean, not obviously right now, but I'm interested to know what that number is. Like, for every 1% increase in pay that's granted to employees, and how that impacts us with local dollars that we have, that's not funded by the state, whether that for, you know, salaries as well as benefits that we have to come up with.
Well, part of our increase was the increase in cost in PIA per employee, which was not related to the 4% raise. That was just related to the cost of the increase in PIA.
Did that impact our budget?
The total increase is about 40, a little over 40,000 from what we're doing.
That we have to pay from our budget?
From our budget.
As a result of that PIA change?
Yes.
So that would be offset that separate from the salary increase and the corresponding benefits increase of that.
Right.
But that would impact our budget this year, right?
Yes.
But you don't believe that much.
Well, the grand total of about 41,000, 41,000.
PIA. And I'm talking about the salary increases.
The salary increases, the salary increases, the 4% increase, my projection, my estimate, without looking at every single salary, just taking the FY '16 salaries and comparing it against the FY projected '17 salaries, is just the salaries, roughly 230,000.
Okay. And so some portion of that we're paying local?
Local, because there are some positions that aren't local.
You said that doesn't include benefits, too?
That was just salaries, including the benefits, it would be around 270,000.
And this past summer, we made some adjustments with personnel. So how many net positions did we lose in the system?
I think we netted three, I think. Is that right?
Sounds right. Does that cover our student ratios to teachers, student teacher ratio?
We may have a class or two that's 24-ish, 25-ish, but I think all in all, I think the numbers are fine, I think.
So a lot of the time, y'all were talking, and I was trying to look at some numbers, so I missed this, but again, the path that led us from having a million or a million one excess revenue over expenses to where we are today with the high triple-digit, six-digit negative? Is that any... We could have said it was lost enrollment without the corresponding adjustment to staff that happened back in '12 and '13?
Starting in '13, loss of enrollment, but within the just the staff and all.
So...
Instead of adding. We're able to bring it back in line somewhat this year because we have pulled those numbers down from where they were.
And presently, we have, and you said it's already, points already, but how many local units?
4.17.
Okay.
As of August, and .99 at Illinois.
So five, one something. And it seems like you said back before... Well, you said at one point, we had a lot less local units.
Prior to... I'd have to go back to old records, but for years, we carried one to two local units, and that was it.
Well, that was before my time, but I was just wondering how we provided all those dual enrollment and advanced placement historically without, you know, incurring those local units. I know we offer more now.
That's a curriculum question. I'm sorry, I can't answer that for you.
Hey, Mike.
So what's your question?
Oh, how we used to only have one or two local units historically, and now we've got, what, five? But my question was how we provided that service, you know, of advanced placement and dual enrollment with only one or two local units, and now we have, you know, five local units. I mean, I guess we've added some advanced placement and dual enrollment courses, I imagine, but this is going back, you know, before 2010, I mean, Sarah's saying 2006 or '07 timeframe. I was just wondering.
Around 2005, '06, that's when we went into the advanced placement A-plus college-ready grant.
Right.
And so we began adding courses, but we really didn't have to add personnel because we could shift students through scheduling into different classes. And so you could take a teacher that's qualified to teach the AP or dual enrollment and shift personnel or students around so that way you could accommodate those advanced ed classes, I mean, those AP classes of advanced placement. So as far as just adding those courses, I don't know that that really made a difference on personnel. A high school schedule's very complex in that you can add elective personnel and you can pull pressure off the schedule, so, because every student, 700 and some odd high school students, have to be scheduled somewhere for each period. So you can... To say that you really picked up an additional teacher, you know, because of an AP class may not be the case. You may have added personnel in elective area, career tape or somewhere else that could pull those students and you could schedule them there. Does that kind of make sense because all people have to be, all students have to be scheduled somewhere?
Right.
So it's very difficult. Getting to your, back to your question, I don't believe that we added any personnel as a result of AP classes. Like right now with dual enrollment, we have a JSU professor that's coming on campus that's teaching a class, and I know that also, Mr. England, you can help me out on this, but we have some students that are going to JSU, they're taking classes. We have Dr. Rhodes that's teaching the English class that's dual enrollment for us, and that's a new position this year, and he's only working part-time.
Yeah.
Is that... Is JSU paying that salary or since it's dual enrollment?
No, we're paying that.
Do we also pay for the other dual enrollment teachers that come here? Like, is Dr. Harvey, doesn't he teach?
He teaches from the college, he's an employee of the college.
And he doesn't come here, he went to the schools?
Yeah. Doesn't he come here?
We pay him the difference for his education.
Right.
We pay Rhodes, because Rhodes is our...
But it's dual enrollment for JSU?
Right. But, I mean, it's college, it's credit for their dual enrollment.
Right, but wouldn't JSU cover that? I mean, why would that be different than, now I know that Dr. Harvey's employed there, but it's a dual enrollment class for JSU?
But Dr. Harvey is on staff at JSU.
I understand.
I think what his question is, is why wouldn't you just get another JSU employee to do English?
Or if, I would think Dr. Rhodes would be employed by JSU.
It's only when JSU has it available. The example I can give you to clarify that is with speech. We were going to offer dual enrollment speech with one of our teachers this next year, but that teacher is no longer employed with us. So I asked the college, along with Ms. Stallings, if they could provide us a JSU teacher for speech. They didn't have one available that could come over to the school to do that for us. The only thing they could do is have our students go over to the college.
How do we feel about that?
Our students going? We have some that go, but it depends on transportation, so some of our students do not have transportation.
I know it goes in state, we have a lot from the county area, Saks, Weaver, some Alexandria. We've got juniors and seniors coming in every morning at 8 o'clock. There's a 8 o'clock dual enrollment class, they're taking the college students, and then there's 11 o'clock class. They have to drive and have to have approval from their superintendent, but we've probably got almost 100 kids coming in from high schools.
And the Gass and State teacher?
Gass and State teacher.
Employed by Gass and State.
Employed by Gass and State, but they're coming to our camp.
Right.
And we're not going to them. Now, now, in some schools where they do dual enrollment, they may take, they may have, like if Dr. Rhodes was on our staff full-time, he could teach dual enrollment, and he would be our employee already. So if we had an employee already that was certified, wanted to teach a dual enrollment class, without hiring that extra person. My understanding, Dr. Rhodes is doing that, that's his duty, has that part-time instructor. I don't know if we have another, we may not have an English instructor on staff that can do a dual enrollment class.
Yeah, I was wondering, if that's typical, that that school system would, of course, I think it gets Dr. Rhodes, has nothing to do with him, but just if it's typical, that a school system would compensate a teacher to teach a dual enrollment class for a local university or for another university, is that maybe common?
I don't mean to butt in, but I know that they do that. Some schools will hire part-time because they don't have someone already on staff that can handle, that could be cert, that's qualified to teach that dual enrollment, because you just can't have an industry teacher. Or they don't have the staff or just the capability, so they have to have another person. That person becomes an employee of that school system, not that... But JSU will say, yes, Dean Rhodes is a teacher because he needs qualifications to teach at college.
Right, but the tuition that students pay is going to JSU?
Or Gass and State, or Alabama, or wherever they're... That's the way.
And that's typical? Does it seem like you would be?
It's not everywhere, but, you know, like I said, some schools have personal staff already, knows it down, a lot of times, sometimes in rural areas, they'll take, you know, part-time students, but it's a kind of staff to do that A.D. Or that's what we've experienced with dual enrollment.
So to recap, some of the things we said earlier, the main reason why we have the five local units is because the state stopped paying for those because of the less enrollment, the drop in enrollment, right? We just kind of had to pick it up and wait till our enrollment numbers increased. Is that correct analysis, Sarah? For a layperson?
When your enrollment drops, your state allocation drops.
So instead of... So we kept those teachers by paying it locally instead of, because we weren't getting the state money anymore, right? Correct? I mean, if you drop, if you lose 200...
We did not reduce our local units.
We didn't have any really before the drop in revenue, but then they became local units after the drop in revenue to the state, because there was no state revenue allocated. I think that's why they asked, you know, whether they were local information, never state paid, and then we, our revenue from state decreased because even though it went down for the two years, then...
We did not reduce our...
So they had to be paid by somebody, so it came from local, as opposed to state for dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the kind of analysis, I'm sorry. Yeah. This is the kind of analysis that, you know, that was helpful, you know, just for us to get out in the open and discuss. So I think it was worthwhile us having this work session, but we can continue. But I do need to use the restroom, and I guess that's allowed during a work session.
So Dr. Peterson, this summer, I don't have the agenda with me, but we had a personnel meeting, we reduced personnel, several positions. Many of those, then were added back, because we just have a net three.
Net three is all we had.
And were all those instruction positions? It seems like they were all...
They were.
So does that say that we have no room in the system for non-student facing or non-instructional positions to be more efficient? Because we reduced teachers?
Ask me that question again.
I'm just, you know, trying to get an idea of when we're looking, you know, to reduce expenses, and since such a large part of our budget is salaries and benefits, you know, of course, all employees are important, but, you know, what I've seen... You know, of course, all employees are important, but, you know, what I've seen or sort of heard in some of the strategic planning meetings that we've had from stakeholders and from staff is, is that, you know, if you're going to, that classroom size is important. It's like Kelly was asking, you know, has this impacted the number of, you know, instruction, which is a direct result of student employment, at least one direction. So I would think that if you're, and hoping that as you reduce staff, that you're looking at non-student facing positions. And everybody had an impact, clearly, direct or indirect, whatever, the direct, at least in my mind, for the teachers. by reducing, but when staff is reduced and it's being teachers, is that saying that there is no room anywhere else to, in non-student facing, that we're in absolutely below the possible level?
If you remember, we ended up replacing some of those support people because of the job that they do. We were trying to identify as many places to reduce expenditure as we could. We have the issue of tenure out there. Again, going back to the thought of having more staff than what our students have earned. What do we have, twelve something last year, Sarah?
I believe that's correct.
And we're down to what now, five?
Five.
So is your goal to be down to zero next year or?
I think eventually they'll get to that point. I mean, it's all a process. Depending on, you know, you take high school kids, you've got a bunch of kids that's in drama. I mean, we replaced the drama teacher. We had a number of kids, we got, we got to create lots of niches for lots of kids, and that was a niche that we had a lot of kids enroll. So I didn't feel like we could not hire that one back for that spot. And I think you've got to go through each category that way.
Well, my concern, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
My concern remains, I think twenty-five kids in one classroom, if we're talking out of inventory, it's pretty tough. So I, I don't want us, you know, to say, oh, we got a zero budget, yeah, we got thirty-two kids sitting in a classroom. I don't want us to balance the budget on the by-call from kids. And so I think we have to be mindful of those student-teacher ratio. Our business is to educate students.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what, along the same theme, my experience so far in the four years I've been here is that the high school is almost impossible to operate with no local units. And that's most high schools. If you're going to provide the product that most customers demand, to put a competitive school on the market.
We have, this particular year, sixteen seventeen, we have three point six seven local teachers. We have a half a counselor and we have twelve support people at the high school that are local. So we went from six oh nine last year, teachers, to three point six seven.
What about the support?
They went from ten point five to twelve at the high school.
Well, for me, the last thing, you know, I'm with you, Kelly, the last thing I'm going to do is impact the classroom, classroom size, our offerings. I would love to see us offer more, you know, we, in my opinion, don't offer what our students really need to have access to, we have foreign languages. But unfortunately, at the end of the day, we have so much revenue to operate off of from state and local sources. And if, you know, it might feel good to keep various programs and hire, but when you get to the point where you run out of money, then nothing happens, then lots of kids lose. And I'm not saying we're at that point, but at three to four hundred thousand dollars a year with no plan, I mean, apparently, we're operating at the very bare bones of where we possibly can presently. And so we could pretty much say, unless the state legislature decides to give education a lot more money, which I'm not really going to count on that, as much as I would like to, you know, we can do the math, at four to five hundred thousand dollars a year reduction in our fund reserve, we're eventually going to be below our one-month reserve. And Sarah, what happens when that happens? When you go below one month?
You have to have an official plan.
Which means you've got to get the budget in a profitable mode where you're adding net income to the state as opposed to deficits.
Or you're showing the effort, showing the effort to do it. We have a definite plan as to how you're going to get there, you know, interact with the state.
So what if we're doing all we can do and we just keep losing four hundred thousand dollars a year?
If you're asking me, first of all, if it was me, I'm not the one to take away staff for that period. If it was me, I would look at different programs. We talked about supplements last year, y'all may throw yarders at me, but I would start looking at programs to see what, where the participation is, what the plan is for those particular programs, if they're going to be successful, if they're going to be competitive. And if they're not, then find another means, whether it be through parts of reg or whether it be through a cast or what other vehicles may be outside the community. When you've got twenty-five students in a classroom, no one's winning. So for me personally, I'm not looking to make money. If we finish to the zero balance, that's great, but I can never look at cutting classroom teachers or even support personnel, just like Sarah, we're talking about, she needs the support personnel, we should have hired for it. And then when I, when we sit up here and we're so concerned now, and we should be, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but we've sat up here and approved different expenses. So maybe we need to look at us as a board, and when things come to be approved, we still can say, well, should we approve this? Should we build this new facility? Should we add to this program? Should we, given this, spending this for that survey, why are we not asking ourselves that if we're asking others? And that's kind of where I'm coming from, because I see we've approved every budget that's come across us.
Including what we're looking at right now, which is up? And so to continue down the road?
But I've never seen this, many people, I've never seen this group so upset over it, and it's been going on for a while, and we've approved it every time. And when we've done these expenses, we've had a majority that voted yes for these expenses.
Well, you're talking fifteen thousand dollars for the, which didn't even get spent, for example, for the audio, for the kids, the media class?
I mean, we're looking at last ten years, we've got bigger expenses than I have had at the top.
Well, the, some examples you use are one-time expenses. I'm not saying that they're not worthy of mentioning, but when your overall, and some of that amount of capital outweigh, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, is that you said, we're just spending so much time on this now. Well, the reason, I can speak for myself, but when we have, since two thousand fourteen, we subtracted four hundred thousand from our fund reserve in fourteen, we subtracted six hundred ninety-two thousand from our fund reserve in fifteen, and we subtract, this year, we're on track to subtract three hundred thousand dollars from our fund reserve, and we're projecting to subtract another four hundred eighty thousand dollars. And it only lasts for so long. And so without a clear path of how this is going to change, and get back to where we were banking a million dollars or even a hundred thousand, or just, I'm with you, let's break even. You know, if we could, you know, if we could end the year where we spent exactly how much we were allocated, that we used every resource for the students as much as we can, that's a perfect world winner impact, obviously. But I'd like to see it be not high negative six-figure numbers year after year. We still have a healthy fund balance, you know, it's two point, what is it now, two point five, two point seven million, which is, we only have to have a million there. But we set our goal as three million, which is what we'd like to have. But we're going to be well below that, down to our minimum one-month reserve in just two or three years if we continue on our present trajectory.
But I, I would say, and I mean, you know, this is my life, huh? But if I could leave you with the thought, it would be that the next board sit down with Sarah and Dr. Peterson. I think we're all in it, and I feel, I mean, just to be honest, I feel tension up here. I feel like that we're looking to try to get somebody or blame somebody, and there's nobody to blame, we're all in this together. We've all made these decisions, we've, you know, voted on it, we've all done these reports, we've all looked at that. So I think if you set, my recommendation would be to sit down together and look at what you need from Sarah to be as a board. And it come out once instead of being thrown here and there and at different spots and then being asked when that's not already a part of the plan. I'm not making any sense.
Well.
Timeline, if you want this from Sarah by this day, and if Sarah can't get it by that date, maybe she sends an email, hey, I don't have the state yet, or the state's changing. And then the same time the board, well, I know I don't get that to October, I know I don't get that to August, so I'm not hounding and fussing. And then when we come across these every month, we be more diligent in looking at it, in looking at those expenses, if that is the purpose of the next board. But I think relationships are being torn, and I think we have to build those relationships. I think there is animosity, I feel it in the air, I feel there's tension, and I'm like, if we want to blame somebody, and we don't have, we don't feel a lot of trust. So that would be my recommendation going forward, is to sit down, air it all out, and come up with a plan to move forward. Because now I feel like everybody, you know, you're on the defense.
Well, I just think that, you know, we needed to call a work session because, like you say, was, like Kelly said, it was kind of piecemeal, you know, maybe a board member would have a question about this part of the budget, or, you know, and then it would, it kind of come to all of us, but, you know, I thought that if we all got together as a group and discussed it, you know, at a work session with Dr. Peterson, you know, it would be all for the better. So anyway, the.
Because maybe you meet with Sarah at a time that's available, and, you know, she set up, maybe she sits on her schedule once a month, here are the hours that you board members could sign up and have an appointment with me to talk about this month.
Well, I'm not going to, you know, try to manage our chief financial officer, that, you know, I don't want to get into trying to do that, but anyway, and we're asking individual members here how you would, you know, balance the budget, but really, you know, it's Dr. Peterson working with Sarah, you know, that will make that recommendation, and then all we can do is vote up or down, you know, about the budget. We, you know, I guess we could, we could, you know, when we submit goals, we could offer suggestions, but really, the recommendation's still going to have to come from Dr. Peterson. So I guess we could ask him about, you know, plans, how we could, you know, attack this deficit moving forward.
I've been through this FY seventeen numerous times, trying to find places that we can cut. These issues didn't come overnight, and it's not going to be overnight to get them where we want them. It's going to be a process, and I think Kelly's hit the nail on the head that we need to have a plan, and we need to have our board involved in this process. Obviously, the budget is the biggest piece that we've got to deal with because it deals with our people. And we've tried to manhandle this over this past year, and obviously, we're not where we need to be. But I would certainly welcome an opportunity with our new board to sit down on a regular basis and go through these and how do we get from point A to point B?
Well, you know, I don't feel the animosity, but, you know, I, I did just feel a need for us to communicate, and, you know, we've been asked to be transparent, and, you know, that this is us being transparent, and, you know, it's, I guess it's easier to pass these budget deficits when you've got four million in the bank, you know, you don't want, you don't want to appear to the public like you're just hoarding money, you know, you want to spend it on the kids, you know, because if, if you're perceived as having just, you know, a boatload of money, but really, one month, I mean, a million dollars is every month, you know, so a million, to a layperson, it seems like a lot of money, but, you know, we have a lot going out with salaries and operating expenses, so I don't know how much more we have to discuss in the work session, but we can keep going, since I've had my restroom break, and I'm not going to drink any more water. So anyway, so you didn't feel like there was a need to ask for an extension, a budget extension?
I don't know that we've got to that point yet. I know fifteenth is coming in a couple of days, we still got to do a second hearing. I'm kind of waiting on the board to give me direction as to whether or not we're going to ask for one. We'll continue to work to try to pare down that budget from four hundred eighty-one deficit budget. I've gone through it several times, and I know that y'all have as well. Where else can we pair at this time?
Well, you mentioned earlier that it's a process, so I guess that means it might be a multi-year process instead of being a committee overnight. What would be, what would change, what could we expect to change next budget year that would make this better?
Well, I guess probably we need to do a budget calendar. That would help. I think maybe if we could find some help for Sarah to kind of help us on the front end of this, to be able to bring these things out in a timely fashion. Maybe we need to have a finance committee for the board, I mean, I don't know.
I guess I'm speaking more to what's going to change in the numbers to make it not high six-figure negative number again next year, if we're operating, you know, at the bare minimum now. And we haven't even talked about iPads, replacing the technology in the system, which is another three or four hundred thousand dollars per year.
We've still got some life out of those, don't we, Miss Stewart?
Well, the refresh year was supposed to be this year, so we're getting an extra year out of them this year.
Okay.
My plans, I've expressed this to, I think, most of you on the board, but my plans are to have a committee in the spring that would involve stakeholders and teachers and students to get feedback on, you know, what they would like to see for our future, but I know that it would be dependent on funds as well.
Thank you.
I think our strategic plan, as we've said before, needs to be budget-driven, as well as where we need to go, and the two need to be together. What does that mean?
Means increasing enrollment, I think, and I think we will be able to do that.
Well, we did that this year with thirty, thirty-five, I think, so.
That's a hundred and eighty thousand in the positive, but of course, we won't realize it, what, a couple of years? Sarah?
For the full effect of the change.
Any other discussion? We have a meeting tomorrow, right?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Sarah, thank you for all, for working with us a lot, we'll get there in a quick few hours, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, any other comments or, all right, well, we've been here a couple of hours, and I appreciate all the participation. Thanks, Ms. Stewart, and thanks for Mr. Newell and Mr. Singleton for helping us answer some of these questions, and Ms. Enman. So anyway, I guess we can go. I don't have a gavel, so.